Pull your button.
That's it, okay. We're gonna go and start the regular meeting of the City Council of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, October 7th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers. Our invocation tonight will be from our Mayor Pro Tem Lisa Parsons. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ooh. Thank you, Ellen. To Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, Lord, and we thank you for this community that you have given us to live in, Lord. Just ask that you be with each one of us on the council, that we make wise decisions this evening for our community, for now and for the future. Lord, we just ask you to be in this meeting, and we ask these things in your name. Amen.
I'm Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, there you guys.
Rokeau, clerk.
Councilman Boyer?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Massingham?
Here.
Councilman Depew?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Parsons?
Here.
Mayor Corn.
Here.
Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, item six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. We have Greg West. Go ahead and give your name and your address for the record.
I'm Greg West, 1184, 476. Mayor, this may be on the printed agenda, is it about the use of the ARBA funds? Is that on the printed agenda?
It is on the printed agenda. Item seven, our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Mr. Mayor, the items listed were in our packet, and with that being said, I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. The City Council will consider a bid received for extra d- extra-
Extrication.
Yeah, extrication tools for the Papa Bluff Fire Department. Chief Mike Moffett is here to present.
Yes, we're planning on replacing the set of extrication tools.
Oh, can you pull the button?
Little button right there. See how that better?
There it is.
All right. Yeah, we're wanting to replace this set of extrication tools. We're purchased in 2006. The manufacturer that made those tools is out of business, so when they break, they're just gonna be anchors. They're- we will not be able to get parts for them. We're gonna replace them with a set of battery-powered extrication tools that are most more versatile, and will have a lot more uses. Yeah. So, we put it out for bids, and we got one bid from a company that I do a lot of business with, and I'm comfortable with their price.
I make a motion to move to the voting session to be held October 21st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the City Council will consider bids received for a payroll and timekeeping system and an amendment to the fiscal year 2024 City of Papa Bluff budget. Interim City Manager Lori Phelps to present.
This item, we advertised for bids for a payroll and timekeeping system. We received three bids from CPU out of Cape Girardeau, Vista out of Blue Bell, Pennsylvania, and People Guru out of Temple, Florida. Our HR Director reviewed the bids and recommends CPU. Our Parks and Recreation Department, they use CPU and are very happy. She checked with the HR Director in the city of Cape, and they're very happy. Currently, our payroll clerk keys in everything by hand. There's a lot of room for error, a lot of room for mistakes. Nothing transfers at the end of the year. It's just a ton of work on our payroll and finance department. Terry Leslie, the internal auditor and office manager for MU, retired in September. She did a lot of things on the back end for the city. We contributed $19,000 yearly to her salary. Now, we won't be paying that, so we could put that toward it. Also, our accounting manager, Tanya Jones, has inherited all these duties, and if Kathy, the payroll clerk, were free, she could help Tanya quite a bit with this. Otherwise, I think we would have to hire a part-time, maybe a full-time person, and my opinion is, this is probably the better option. And at this time, I'll ask our HR Director, Lisa Hafford, to come forward and answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, does anybody have any further questions for me?
I had a question. Is this something that's been kind of brewing for a while, or did it just come up? I was wondering why it's presented tonight, and we need to vote on it tonight.
So, whenever I first started and I was kind of reviewing how they've done everything, they've used this same company for many, many years. And it- they've really- the city has outgrown it. And as Lori was saying, there's so many things that are so manual that it takes a lot more time to do payroll than it really should. It also, with all of the manual input, leaves a lot of room, exponentially more room for errors. So, at that time, Matt was still here, and I spoke with him some about, you know, potentially making that switch. And as Matt and I, and then Lori and I spoke about it, January 1st seems like the easiest time to make that transition, because otherwise, whenever it comes the end of the year, they're gonna have to go in and input everything again, because nothing carries over. So, if they were already gonna have to do all that work, then it makes sense to go ahead and just make the switch at that time. So, the work's gonna be the same, but then going forward, it's going to be a lot quicker. And there's typically about, usually about 12 weeks lead time that they need to get all the information from us, so that we can hit our target date of January 1st.
Okay, so that just kind of answers the question. You've identified the need when you became the HR, and then you recommended that this be upgraded to that. And then the 12 weeks, that's- does that company populate the new system then?
So, we will have to do a lot of- we will have to gather all the information, pull a lot of stuff down through Excel spreadsheets and stuff like that, and send it to them. And then, once they put it in the system, then we'll have to scrub it all, just to make sure that there's no discrepancies or anything.
Okay. Thank you.
This is something we've been talking about for a couple of years. We just never really had the funds to do it, but I kind of feel like we're at a point now where it's kind of do or die. Like I said, Terry did so much for us, and Tanya is gonna inherit that, and I just think this is the way to go. We will pay for it out of capital funds, so we'll have to do a budget. But services are around $32,000 for the first year to about $37,000 for the fifth year. So, it would be a five-year agreement.
I was gonna ask that for capital or not. Yes.
Now, that system's probably- that we've been using is probably 20 years old. I mean, it's kind of chaotic, probably needed to be changed.
Oh, yeah, you remember.
Yeah, I did payroll on it, so I know it's a-
I sent a yes vote there.
So, is this internet-based, or is it a software?
Yes, it's cloud-based, yes. And that made Michael happy with the- they had all the necessary security features and everything, so. Also, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I was just curious about entering data. Will they have time clocks? Will it automatically feed into the system?
So, there's- there are different ways that they can clock in and out. If they have a computer terminal, they can clock in that way. There's also an app that they can clock in, like police officers, they can clock in on their app. We can also set, like, geofencing if we don't want them to be able to clock in, you know, further than X amount of distance away from their home base, or if we want to put- because I know Lanny said he had put parameters in there that they couldn't clock in more than 15 minutes ahead of their shift, just to try to, you know, make sure he was cutting down on any potential overtime and stuff.
With the geofencing, can you make it to where they come on the property, that they can only clock in on the property?
Mm-hmm, yes. So, I'm sure that we will talk about the different departments, because it'll be different, department-specific. But that's another thing I like about CPU, is because they do work with other cities close to us, so they're very used to having, you know, fire department that works 24 hours and police department that may work 10 or 12 or 8, or, you know, so they're accustomed to having to do all those things a little bit differently within the system, because not everybody's 8 to 5.
Plus the callouts and all that.
Right, exactly.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
I make a motion to move it to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item C, the City Council will consider amending the City of Papa Bluff Code of Ordinances, Section 205.420, entitled Empowerment After Biting. City Planner James Sisk to present.
This item was brought to me by one of our animal control officers, Mr. Hastings. Basically, what this is, if the- if they have a dog bite suspect, if they can prove the animal has had its vaccinations and all of its shot records are up to date, rather than that animal being impounded at our facility, which is running full at a lot of days now, and that'll allow that animal to go back home and be re-inspected in 10 days. Again, this is only if the animal has all of its shot records and everything, and being proven that it's up to date, so.
I had a question. On the code, the current code, the way it's written, the last part of that code, it says, you know, the biting dog shall be boarded with a licensed veterinarian at the owner's expense or impounded at the city animal shelter at the owner's expense, and released to the owner during normal business hours. What does that mean? Sounds contradictory.
Well, rather, if they choose for their animal to not be impounded at the shelter currently, so that it's, you know, not in with the general animal population, they can choose to take it to a veterinary clinic.
No, the last part, it says, "and released to the owner during normal business hours." What does that part mean?
That's just so that it can be picked up when the shelter's open, at the end of their 10 days.
Yeah, it doesn't say at the end of the 10 days. It just says, "and released to owner during normal business hours." Seems like odd wording.
I didn't write that part of the ordinance, so that's the old ordinance.
We should probably clean that up.
Okay, we can certainly do that, that's not a problem.
My only concern was if it's a vicious dog that bit, and we live with the person that had it, have it back.
Again, but that's why we put it in there, the way it was rewritten. This has to be a first offense, and they have to be able to prove that they have all their shots and paperwork, and that the animal will be re-inspected, so. It's a- if this is a habitual vicious dog, then that won't be the case. If they already have record of it being there for the same reason before, then that goes out the window, so it won't be an option.
So, does this have anything to do with the two-bite ordinance or statute?
No. Again, if it's the second time, then they won't have the option to take it home. This is strictly first incident, and they have all the proof that the animal has been vaccinated, so.
Thank you.
Is there any discretion? I mean, we're talking about a dog bite. It could be one bite, or it could have an arm just mauled to death, and-
No, if that's the case, you know, depending on the situation, the officer will have the option to impound the animal as well, so. That kind of takes it into a different level if we're talking about something-
Yeah, just wanted to make sure, so.
And we've had chihuahuas latch on to people before, and then we've had to impound that animal for 10 days for a minor bite, so. Again, if it's an isolated incident, first time, and, you know, they have their shot records, so let it go home for 10 days. Again, this is really just to keep an animal that doesn't really need to be at the shelter out of the shelter and exposed to, you know, those- the general population of what's there, so.
Shouldn't it be noted in there to be the severity, so that they can't come back and argue that it's his first bite?
Well, I think the rest of the ordinance, when it comes to the vicious animal, will cover all that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Sisk?
I make a motion to move to the voting session to be held October 21st.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the City Council will consider authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the Humane Society of the United States. Mr. Sisk?
This is an opportunity that was brought to us by the Humane Society. As you know, we do still have a cash chamber that has been used for euthanization over the years at our shelter, and it is the last remaining one in Missouri, and we have had several rescues that otherwise asked us to please stop using it, which, for the most part, it has only been used in emergency situations for the last couple of years. But the Humane Society's come forward, along with the one I presented to you a few weeks ago, they also offered to cover our costs for a year. Well, this was a substantially larger grant that has been offered through the Humane Society and a donor, to do away with the chamber itself, and for $15,000 grant to cover our costs by not using it, so. That's what this is. It's a pretty good opportunity to get rid of kind of an item that not many people have been using for a while, and it's-
How will we dispose of unadoptable animals?
So, the accepted way currently, and we are considered a no-kill shelter at this point, we don't euthanize just for the sake of population control. So, the only animals we'll put down are those that are, you know, sick or injured.
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
Those who might go to a veterinarian and be put down by them, rather than our- doing it at our shelter. And that's what these grants are for, is to cover the cost of us to transport and for the veterinarian to do it, and then dispose of the carcass.
Thank you.
Now, I make a motion to pass this to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the City Council will consider a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the vacation of a portion of a sewer easement. General Manager Bill Bach to present.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I was not here in '89 when Walmart Supercenter was built, but apparently, we, the utilities, was asked to relocate water and sewer lines and storm drains, which the city did to let that facility get built. When Murphy's built their new facility, it came up that they were building on our easement. Well, the lines had been moved, but we did not have a vacation of the existing easement door, did we have easements for the existing water lines and sewer lines? So, to allow the construction there, we worked with Murphy's, and they granted us new water and sewer lines across their portion of the property, and we've cleaned that up, and this is to vacate the easements that's on their property. We still have a problem on adjoining properties, and they've been in the ground 35 years, 36 years. I talked to Mr. Richardson about this, and I was trying to see if we could, like, maybe hold off to force them, and that his recommendation, we'll work with them as need be, and we'll push this can a little, maybe another 36, 36 years down the road. So, this is to vacate a easement that's no longer needed, and we have been granted the water and sewer easement that is needed where our existing lines are at. So, this was discussed at a earlier advisory board and would recommend the vacation of these easements. Any questions?
One question. So, the part that's being vacated, there's no utilities left on that?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's where the building is.
Perfect.
Make a motion to pass this to voting session October 21st.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the City Council will consider change order number two relative to the Papa Bluff Stormwater American Rescue Plan Act, ARBA project. Mr. Bob Summers here to present.
Bob Summers with Heartland Engineering. Good to see everybody. So, I think this is a good thing this evening. When we awarded the project to R.L. Parsons, we had about a million, two, a little over 1.2 million of extra money. The council will probably recall, the city awarded a change order to RLP at that time, but we didn't define what we were gonna use the money for. Basically, the federal government came in and said, "If you don't award this money to RLP, we're gonna take it back." And it's 100% grant money, by the way, there's no- or there's very little cash input that the city's putting in. At the last pay request we did, we- Lori and I heard back from the state that they wanted basically definition of what we were starting to use the money for. And so, working with Mr. Lawson and the street department, we had begun using part of that extra money to do quite a variety of things. Lori, I think you sent the change order around for everybody, so they can see it.
Yeah, they got it in their packet.
Okay. So, as you can see, there are change order items 1A through I. Effectively, we awarded A, B, C, A, B, and C was day one. We told them to go ahead and start using that money in those directions, and then, as we've run into a variety of small things, such as water lines that were above the flow line of the ditch that we needed to lower, a variety of other things, we have- we fixed them as we've gotten there. Essentially, what the plan is, is right now, we have about $400,000, that's item D, change order 1D, that any money that's left over at the end of the job, we plan to continue the paving down, and if you guys have seen the ditch road ditch being paved to get rid of mosquitoes and whatnot, we're gonna extend that as far as we can until the money runs out. But we've also been able to do some really great stuff around town that normally wouldn't have been available to us, and it's a good project all the way around, about $5 million that we got to use for stormwater around Papa Bluff. I think that answers, I hope that answers most of the questions, but I'll be glad to take anything that you might have.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Not about the extra- well, it is kind of about the extra money. The paving of the ditch, that's the main part, and maybe doing some box culvert work to access for the businesses.
Yes.
I understand that the, on the west side of ditch road, there's flooding over there, Henry Street and that area, and that you're actually boring underneath ditch road to drain that water away?
That's correct. There are actually two areas will be boring. We ran into quite a few utility issues with a water line down there as well, which is involved in this change order, and those bores have not been put in yet. There will be some definite street shutdown when we get into that, probably in the next 60 days. We primarily, we're trying to get the contractor up and out of that, out of the bottom of that ditch before the weather starts in with the winter. The rest of the project can be built, I mean, the drier the better, but we want to get him out of that ditch, and so that's where we've told them to ask them to focus their efforts.
So, I understand that draining the water from the west side over to the east side of the road would alleviate some of the flooding, but it wouldn't completely fix it? Is that the case, and is this extra money, could that extra money be used to finish draining the rest of that water off that wouldn't be drained off?
Absolutely. We could use the money wherever the council would like us to do, and the street department, of course.
Is that possible, in the design?
Yeah, we could, yep. We are currently building new ditches down all of- most of Cross and most of Arthur, and then a few spots in between, so we're hitting a very large portion of that lower What is the school's name?
Eugene.
Eugene Field, thank you. Basically, we're running new culverts all the way up to Eugene Field in two different directions, and taking all of that water, and ultimately, it dumps out onto the ditch road ditch. So, it's gonna make a massive improvement, but there are some areas that, frankly, there's not enough money in this project to take care of. There's a lot of need, because it's so flat, and it hasn't been ditched or culvert, installed in, well, forever. So, we certainly would love to do a 2.0 project if money comes along.
So, the extension to the south from the pavement of the ditch, that's a higher priority then than any other bores underneath ditch road?
I think it is right now. Now, Mr. Lawson's crew would decide to change that. We certainly can do so, and we're positive, we're gonna run into some other odds and ends as we go along. It just, unfortunately, it's the nature of the beast. But there will be some money at the end of the project that we likely, the plan is currently, to extend the ditch road ditch as far as we can, but if I'm told differently, we'll do whatever.
Basically, what we're voting on tonight, though, is just to enumerate and describe the projects, the exact things that you're doing for the grant requirements?
So, we're defining, of about 1.2 million dollars, we are defining roughly 800,000 of it. There's roughly $400,000 left over at the end of the project that we could move around if we needed to. And actually, a portion of that has already been used as well, so there's, I'm gonna say, roughly $300,000 that can float around as need be. We don't really want to use that money, though, until we get closer to the end of the project, because, again, we're positive, things are gonna pop up that we just, we have no way to know that they're there until we hit them.
That'll be completed in 2025, probably?
It will be, yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep. The reason I ask that it be voted on this evening is pretty simple. We've got a pay request that's being held up until it can be voted on, and contractors don't like to get not paid.
Well, it looks great down there, where they've done all that work, and, gosh, we've needed that forever, so.
Ever.
I'd make a motion, we'd pass this to tonight's voting session.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Item nine, action-required items, AA, bill number 8586. The City Council will take action on an ordinance annexing property located at 123 Market Lane into the city limits with a zoning designation of RS1 rural residential.
Motion for first reading of bill number 8586?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance annexing certain real property into the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 123 Market Lane in Butler County, Missouri, and owned by Karen and Dennis Hast.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance accepting and annexing certain real property into the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 123 Market Lane in Butler County, Missouri, and owned by Karen and Dennis Hast.
Make a motion for adoption.
Any questions or discussion? Rokeau, clerk Vernon?
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornyn?
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Bill number 8586 has been adopted. BB, bill number 8587. City council will take action on ordinance approving expenditures of the American Rescue Plans Act money.
Motion for first reading of bill number 8587?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance approving expenditures in the amount of 147,398,057 cents from the ARPA fund for demolition of condemned properties and amending the 2024 fiscal budget for the city of Papa Bluff for this purpose.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance approving expenditures in the amount of 147,398,057 cents from the ARPA fund for demolition of condemned properties and amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for the city of Papa Bluff for this purpose. Mr. Mayor, I would like to have more discussion on this.
Absolutely.
Ladies and gentlemen, I believe the last time I was here, three, four weeks ago, we had a dump truck that had caught on fire. Felt pretty confident that it was going to be able to be fixed. Unfortunately, the parts for this truck no longer are made.
Jerry, can you raise your mic just a little?
And the parts are no longer made. The insurance adjuster and his superior have both looked into this and have concluded that the truck needs to be totaled. I just found this out this afternoon about 2:30, and the total value of the truck will be $68,037. I know when I was here last time, we spoke about possibly tabling this because this is a frontline truck. It's our ten-wheeler. This is the truck that we use to put the big plow on. It also carries 1,600 gallons of salt brine, a tank that fits, can only fit in this truck. We don't have another truck this size. So, it's desperately needed to be replaced. This would cause serious trouble if we had any kind of meaningful snow event. It's, like I said, it's invaluable to us. It also helps tearing down houses. I mean, it can haul just about twice as much as any other dump truck we have. So, I'm not sure where we can go with this. I know this money needed to be allocated for something before the end of the year, but I don't have it in my current budget, nor the one I've turned in to replace this truck. Because when I turned it in, I was under the impression it was going to be able to be fixed. So, if you have any questions on the truck, I've brought Mr. Batten here with me. He's much more knowledgeable on the big equipment and big trucks than myself, and he'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
What's the price on a new truck?
We've been looking, and there's some things that Kyle will go into here. We're looking, we're needing a Cummins engine. We have the software for that to run diagnostics and everything, so that would be highly, it'd be valuable to have a Cummins engine. They're looking somewhere in the neighborhood between 180 and 190.
And if you go to purchase a new truck, I know you have to take bids, so you're looking at, what, two or three week forbidding process?
Unless we go into Sourcewell and see what their, you know, bottom line is on it, and then if one of the truck dealers locally can beat that, well, we'll be good to go with something that they can find.
Any idea on when's the soonest you would have a truck available to purchase?
They have several, but it doesn't quite meet the engines, not what we would want. And we've heard some bad things about, it's a new design, and it's, well, the people have told us, if you buy that truck with that engine, you better buy every warranty that goes with it. So, that's pretty much, we don't want that.
I guess what I'm getting at is, would you have one by the end of the year?
I think so. Yes, I do. I do believe we could have that before traditional bad weather would get here.
Good question. So, on the new truck and the software that you've got for diagnostics and maintenance, that's used for both, right? The software, and your, your mechanics are comfortable with working on the Cummins engines? That's why you like to stick with that? Do you have other trucks that have that?
Yes. Yeah, most all of our fleet are Freightliner, M2 Business Class, and they have the Cummins in them. I think we still have, we've got a Ford that's a 98, 99, and we have an International that's 1995. We don't use those trucks as often, but we do have them. They're smaller trucks.
Okay.
Everything else they have is a Cummins engine with a Freightliner chassis.
I'm not a truck guy, so correct me if I'm wrong here. So, I understand that if there's that software, the diagnostic and maintenance software that you got, that's pretty expensive to keep that subscription?
Yeah, we pay a subscription up on it. And it's one of these things, the new truck will have a warranty with it for a while, but we typically, like I said, we've got a 99, and we've got actually two 95s, but one of the 95s we use is, we rob parts all the bit to keep the other one running.
So, if you bought?
We hold on to them for a while.
Yeah. So, you were talking about possibly obtaining a new truck if we can find the money for it. And is there a certain cutoff date that, that software that you guys use for your most of your fleet?
It re-upps anything new. It just updates itself.
So, if it's a new truck, that software will still be compatible with a brand-new truck? Okay, so that's not a, that's not a limiting factor for whether you buy a new or a used truck?
No.
Would a, would a used truck be of, could you find a suitable used truck for, or is that a possibility?
Yeah, but you don't know what you're getting, David. And we need this truck to be reliable. If we was talking about, you know, a second or third truck, it wouldn't be a big deal. We have bought a used smaller dump truck before, hadn't had any real problems with it. But I don't want to go out on a limb with something that we need. Frontline truck. We need it to run. We need it to start and go. And we don't need to be out here, well, it's doing this or it's doing that.
So, if this ARPA money was not available, right now, we're voting to vote it, to tear down houses?
If the ARPA money wasn't available?
What would you do?
It would fall on you guys to figure out a way for us to get a bigger truck, or just let the people know, hey, you're not going to get the roads cleared off as fast. You're not going to get the salt brine put down as effectively as we can now.
So, is that something, then, you would include in the 2025 budget?
I would have to get it back from Lori, and, yeah, we'd have to readdress it. And it would be then?
So, this winter?
At least April or so before we could afford to do that.
If you didn't get a built, a truck, then this winter, you wouldn't be pushing snow or applying salt?
Not with that. Like I said, this, this truck and the two graders goes out, they take Main Street out to Baron Road, then they hit Shelby Road, then they hit Old Grove, and then they hit Shelby. And then one of them will go to the airport, and the other goes to industrial park, and the other takes off through town with some of the other smaller trucks with plows.
So, they work in tandem?
For about three hours in the morning, they all work side by side. Like I said, out on Shelby Road and in Old Grove, they're big and wide, and these three can line up side by side and blow snow off pretty doggone quick.
Yeah, I certainly want to see that truck replaced because it's, you know, like you've mentioned, it's not only for street department projects, they add on projects such as demo houses, you know, it's needed for that, too.
Well, I'd like to offer a suggestion that we would use the 68,000 from the insurance for a down payment and do a two-year lease payment on the remainder to come out of 25 and 26 budget, and use these monies to tear down buildings, because I really want to see these buildings torn down, so. Just a suggestion.
No.
It's a great suggestion, actually.
How would that work with your operation?
If you guys want to do it that way, we'll do it.
Well, doing it that way, would you get a truck in time for this winter's operations?
Well, I think the truck availability may not, is still, the truck, I think, is going to be out there. We'd have to secure financing.
We'll have to advertise for bids for the financing.
Yeah.
How long does that take?
Well, once it's published, we have to leave it open for 10 days and then set the opening day.
So, it's possible we can get it by the end of the year?
Should be possible.
Well, we don't have the 68,000 anyway. We have to wait for the insurance to get that to us.
Well, we have 12 of that. We have 12 of it already.
Right.
They had sent in.
That means that the 68,000 is the down payment.
Yes.
We have to wait and get that anyway.
I don't know how you all are going to do the 148 to tear down houses, but...
Say that again, I couldn't hear.
I'm not sure how you all are going to use the 148 to tear down houses, if you're going to contract that out, or how it was going to be dispersed. If you're going to allocate it to the city planner to put in his budget for us to continue to tear down houses, it comes down to manpower.
We're going to use that new truck, you just told us.
We could, that helps. We've got 10 houses. We have 10 houses lined up right now, but we got some concrete projects that we got to finish before we can pull off and start doing that.
Right. I guess that's kind of the next question here. So, if we did that, and if part of that money was allocated to you for additional houses, is there any room in your program of work to do anymore, or should it be all contracted out?
Winter, wintertime is a good time to tear down houses, as long as we don't get covered up with bad weather, snow, ice. We don't, we don't do any asphalt. Depending on temperatures, concrete kind of backs off some, so we do have time.
So, as far as allocation of that money, it could be more for tearing down houses with your crew and some for a contract?
Like I said, that's...
You couldn't use it all, right?
That decision would go between you all.
I mean, you know, if we gave you all that money to tear down houses, you're going to have to give up some street projects, is that right? Right?
We tear a bunch of houses down for 148,000, but yeah, it would get into doing a little bit of street maintenance as well.
Right. Yeah, I think just that if we did that, then, you know, we need to make sure that people understood that, that we're giving up, we're giving up some street projects to get rid of some of these derelict houses.
But you don't really care, you just want the truck.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I...
I mean, you don't care how it's financed. That's not really your part of, your part of, your part of the need is needing a new truck, is what I mean. I don't mean care.
We need to be able to replace.
Right. You need a truck. You all need a truck. That is what you need.
If it's, yeah.
So, we need to figure out how you get it.
Yeah, whether we finance it or whether we, you know, use this money to do it, or however it goes, yeah. It's, it's just a...
Do we have any idea about when the rest of the salvage money, that 68,000, might be available?
I just found out today, so I'm assuming, I spoke to Steve Rhodes, our insurance carrier, and he spoke with the guy. So, yeah, it could be 10 days, two weeks, you know.
Okay. You don't expect it to be months?
I don't think there's going to be anything protested or anything. Like I said, everybody...
That sounds reasonable. I like Councilman Massingham's suggestion.
I mean, I'm not opposed to tabling this for another two weeks and...
Right. It's not going to hurt you.
We're not going to tear down any houses right now, anyway. Probably not till winter if we do, so.
He's got some ready right now.
A few of them, yeah.
Well.
But for, but we, they're small houses, and some of them...
And their budget is...
Okay. That money was already betted.
Technically, nothing's changing with the bill itself.
Right.
Any further questions, Tom?
No.
Where will we have, did we adopt that?
We had second reading. We had second reading, you know.
All right. So, we need a motion to adopt.
You need to either vote it up or down, right?
Yeah.
Well, table's not going to do any good. I mean, we've already got it. I mean, nothing's going to change.
We've read it first.
Well, I understand that. Hold on just a second. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
I'm here with the Volker County Landlord Association, and we really like the idea of some of these derelict houses getting torn down. And I love Councilman Massingham's idea of using the ARPA funds, because the city's not going to go and borrow money to tear down houses. But they can and authorized to go borrow money for equipment. So, I think that's a brilliant idea to use the, well, in my opinion, as much of the ARPA money as we can to tear down houses, because, you know, obviously, our equipment has to be replaced, and that's a normal part of everyday life. But this was kind of a literally once-in-a-lifetime thing, that we were given a grant for this. I would love to see as much of this as possible directed to the cleaning up of our city and getting rid of the houses. So, I think, and of course, Councilman Massingham had a little bit of experience in finance, so he's seen that before. So, I think it's a great idea. Putting in the two cents for the Volker County Landlord Association.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, do we need a motion to table this, or do we need to...
We're going to table, or are we going to just move forward?
We're going to vote.
I make a motion to adopt.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Vernon?
We have to make a motion.
We have, we have a first and a second. We had a first and a second, and then we had a motion to adopt. Questions or discussion?
I make a motion to adopt.
All right. Any questions or discussion?
We'll need a second.
Is there a second?
I thought we had a second.
No. I haven't heard a second.
Okay.
I just...
We have a motion to adopt, so we need a second?
Now, we need the...
My second.
We'll need...
We still need a second?
We still need a second?
I'll second.
All right. Roll call, Clerk Vernon?
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes. It's the longest Jerry gets his truck.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornyn?
Yes.
Bill number 8587 has been adopted. CC, bill number 8588. The city council will take action on ordinance accepting a bid for payroll and timekeeping services and amending the fiscal year 2024 city of Papa Bluff budget.
Motion for first reading of bill number 8588?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance accepting a bid from CPU of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, for payroll and timekeeping services for the city of Papa Bluff.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance accepting a bid from CPU of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, for payroll and timekeeping services for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption of bill number 8588?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Vernon?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornyn?
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Bill number 8588 has been adopted. DD, bill number 8589. The city council will take action on ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the Humane Society of the United States.
Make a motion for a first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute an agreement with the Humane Society of the United States relating to domestic animals.
Motion for second reading of bill number 8589?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute an agreement with the Humane Society of the United States relating to domestic animals.
Make a motion, adopt bill number 8589.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Vernon?
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson? Mayor Protim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Bill number 8589 has been adopted. EE, bill number 8590, the city council will take action on ordinance approving change order number two relative to the Papa Bluff Stormwater American Rescue Plan Act ARPA project.
Motion for first reading of bill number 8590?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two related to the Papa Bluff Stormwater American Rescue Plan Act project.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two relating to the Papa Bluff Stormwater American Rescue Plan Act project.
Motion for adoption of bill number 8590?
Second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Vernon.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Bill number 8590 has been adopted. We are going to be going into closed session after our city manager's report. The city council, the city of Papa Bluff, will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law, Section 610.1. Dot 2, dot 3, dot 9, dot 11, dot 12, dot 13, dot 14, RSMO. Roll call, Clerk Vernon.
I need a motion, second.
Need a motion, a second?
Make a motion, we go into closed session after city manager's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I roll call, Clerk Vernon?
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Item 10, our city manager's report, interim city manager Lori Phelps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things tonight. We had the Iron Horse Festival on September 28th. Thankfully, the weather held out, and they had a record turnout of 8,000 to 10,000 people. That's a great event for our community. People come from all over for it. Also, that weekend was the Butler County Fair. It was a success. They did have to cancel their derby that Saturday night because of the weather, but they had cornhole tournaments, pageants, displays, and I'd like to thank the Fair Board for all their hard work in putting that event on for the community. They are hosting a rodeo this Friday night at Clinton Park if you'd like to go out and enjoy that. Our airport, they got inspected by MoDOT for routine maintenance and design deficiencies, and none were found. Gary and our crew out at the airport, they do a really good job. You know, day, night, planes come in, somebody's out there to take care of whatever they need. They do have a couple of corporate jets coming in next week. I don't think people realize how much air traffic we see out there and how much that means for business in our community. They're still working on the VRC lobby renovations. That's supposed to be finished by Monday, October 28th. We've had delays due to previously scheduled events here, so the crew has kind of had to work around that. We've had four utility workers that were sent for hurricane relief, Hurricane Helene. I believe they went to Florida first and then South Carolina, and they're back, and we have since dispatched another four to Orlando for the next storm that's coming in. And I believe 51 utilities from Missouri have participated, or 51 workers from Missouri have went down to help with the relief. We are working on 2025 budget. The plan is to present to the council on December 2nd and vote on it on December 16th. Something else we have going on, we got a grant from the Delta Regional Authority for updating the comprehensive plan, which is basically a wish list, things that we'd like to see happen in the community, green space, parks, downtown development, infrastructure, that kind of thing. We are working on scheduling the meetings for citizens' input. That way, our citizens will have a chance to come out and tell us what's important to them. They'll be advertised as soon as those dates and locations are nailed down, for sure. And the last thing I have is Buff Up the Bluff is this Saturday, October 12th, from 8:00 to 3:00. We're partnering with Henson's Transfer again this year, and you can drop off at their location on the industrial park bypass.